Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the May 17th, 2023 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain commissioner, Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today. We acknowledge you in all of our ways. We pray right now for wisdom, knowledge, and to God, every county commissioner and the employees of Hillsborough County. We pray that each and every person, for each and every person in Hillsborough County, we pray for your great love. We pray that it is well with them in their spirits, soul, and bodies. And we pray for protection over every one of their lives in Hillsborough County. We pray for protection. We pray for protection over our military, those serving in our military, law enforcement officers, firefighters, and all first responders in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have four special proclamations this morning before Commissioner Cameron Sapata introduces the first item, a couple of housekeeping things here. Commissioner Cohen is running a few minutes late. I believe he had a doctor's appointment, so his proclamation will be given last. And then also Commissioner Kemp is attending virtually this morning, so we're going to go ahead and do a roll call right now. And then for our votes, we'll still use our machines and Commissioner Kemp will vote, we'll have a voice vote, but if we can go ahead and do a roll call right now.
Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Sapata?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Commissioner Owen?
Here.
Wostol?
Here.
Thank you, young quorum.
All right, thank you. And with that, Commissioner Cameron Sapata will present our first commendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Doctors Rodney and Adonica Howard Brown please join me at the podium? Good morning and thank you for being here today. I'm excited to present this commendation to two people who have served numerous ministries in South Africa and now in Hillsborough County. Since 1996, Doctors Rodney and Adonica Howard Brown have been instrumental leaders to their parishioners and community at the River of Tampa Bay Church, whose theme is "Church with a Difference." It is a pleasure and an honor to recognize their dedication and good works as I read this commendation. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Doctors Rodney and Adonica Howard Brown for their dedication and hard work, most notably at Revival Ministries International, serving their ministries and the community. Doctors Rodney and Adonica Howard Brown came to the United States in 1987 as missionaries with three children and only $300. At the end of 1996, they founded the River at Tampa Bay Church, whose theme, "Church with a Difference," touched the hearts and souls of millions of people from around the world. For over a quarter of a century, their community outreach and numerous programs have positively impacted Hillsborough County, including humanitarian and Hurricane Ian relief work. Additionally, the Howard Browns hosted the Stand 1,000 Nights and Beyond from Revival Ministries International World Headquarters in Tampa, meeting the spiritual needs of their domestic and international communities, a testament of their love to serve all people. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Doctors Rodney and Adonica Howard Brown for their commitment to the Stand, their congregation members, and the community, and wishes them success for many years to come. Executed this 17th day of May, 2023. Congratulations to you both. Would you like to say a few words?
First of all, with a great honor for my wife and I to be here today, and also to thank all the commissioners and the city. You know, we love Tampa. We've been here. It's been our home now more than anywhere else. And we pray over the city. We pray of all the commissioners. We pray for the peace of this whole county. And as far as we're concerned, this is the best county in the whole of America. And not only that, 5,200 members of the River Church are praying for you. So we want to salute you today and thank you for keeping our city safe and for serving the community as well. And we're here to help. If you need our help, just call. We only have a call away. Whatever you need, it's there. So you want to say something, Srinath?
You know, it is our honor to be here in this state of Florida, this great state, and in this county and this city. And we're just so thankful and blessed and just honored to be here today and just know that we love you. Our door's always open and you're always welcome to join us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come stand with me. Where do you want to sit?
Thank you.
Turn this on.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. It's my privilege to present the next two commendations this morning. I would like to invite Selena Rampola. Would you please come up and join me? Good morning and thank you for being here today. It's a pleasure to recognize this young woman who combines her incredible enthusiasm with the dedication to serve her community. Selena Rampola is truly a multi-talented individual with diverse interests. Most notably, her love for the beekeeping industry has led her to receive a significant honor. This commendation, which I will present to her today, highlights that honor in addition to her other wonderful accomplishments. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Selena Rampola for exemplary work in the beekeeping industry, earning her distinction as the American Honey Queen of 2023. The 21-year-old daughter of Renato Rampola and Fay Turk, Ms. Rampola is a young woman of many talents and interests, including travel, scuba diving, deep sea fishing, and nature photography. After graduating summa cum laude with a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of South Florida, the Florida native fostered a new love of beekeeping by working with the American Beekeeping Federation as its national spokesperson. Because of her growth and experience in the field, Ms. Rampola served as 2022 Florida Honey Queen and was selected as the 2023 American Honey Queen. In addition to speaking on behalf of the beekeeping industry in public forums and events, this year's honey queen will dedicate her time and energies to expanding the public's knowledge of this field. On behalf of the American Beekeeping Federation, she will give educational presentations to students of all ages, advocate for honeybees through legislative meetings, and raise awareness on beekeeping and its vital importance to the nation, to television, radio, internet, and print media. Ms. Rampola is a true nationwide ambassador of this growing industry. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Selena Rampola for her unwavering support to the beekeeping industry and wishes her continued success in her future endeavors executed this 17th day of May, 2023. My privilege to present this to you, and would you please say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. On behalf of beekeepers in Florida, I would like to share some information about our sweet industry. Honeybees and beekeepers play a vital role in our ecosystem and agricultural productivity in Florida. Our state has diverse agricultural landscapes, and honeybees are essential pollinators for many of our crops, including citrus, blueberries, and melons. Beekeeping operations in Florida produce $93 million in revenue through pollination services and honeybee product sales. Some challenges that beekeepers in Florida face include invasive pest species that weaken or kill colonies, and lack of floral vegetation that provides food for honeybees and other pollinators. Supporting beekeeping initiatives, research projects, and floral conservation helps beekeepers thrive and promotes the health of honeybee populations. Opportunities to support honeybee health include providing incentives for homeowners to plant pollinator-friendly flowers, and the Florida Department of Transportation Wildflower Program, which aims to increase and effectively incorporate floral habitat for pollinators. Beekeepers in Florida contribute to environmental conservation, preserve agricultural productivity, and stimulate economic growth. I encourage the Board of County Commissioners to support beekeeping initiatives in our county. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions or would like to discuss this matter further, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Well, it's a real honor for me to present this next proclamation declaring June 2nd through June 8th, 2023 is Tampa Rough Riders' 125th Anniversary Week. And I say that not only as a county commissioner, but more importantly, as a proud Rough Rider for 25 years. I'd like to invite the President, Robert Mueller, and the rest of the Rough Riders to please join me up here. the accomplishments and values of President Theodore Teddy Roosevelt and his famous regiment, the Rough Riders. Since 1978, the Tampa Rough Riders have been dedicated to volunteerism, patriotic activities, public service, and fellowship events that enhance countless lives and raise money for charitable causes. It's my pleasure to celebrate the 125th anniversary of the first United States Volunteer Cavalry Regiment Rough Riders by presenting this proclamation, which honors the historical contributions of the regiment and the achievement of the Tampa Rough Riders. It reads, "Whereas in 1898, Colonel Leonard Wood and Lieutenant Colonel Theodore Roosevelt organized the first United States Volunteer Cavalry Regiment, nicknamed Roosevelt's Rough Riders, to fight against the Spanish forces in Cuba during the Spanish-American War. And whereas Tampa was the port of embarkation for the United States Army's invasion of Cuba, and the Rough Riders traveled to Tampa to join the American forces on June 2nd, 1898. And whereas during their stay, the Rough Riders drew national and international attention and acclaim, propelling Tampa from a small town to an emergent city filled with prosperity and growth. And whereas on June 8th, 1898, the Rough Riders joined the invasion fleet at the Port of Tampa and sailed to Cuba, participating in and winning the Battle of San Juan Hill, securing their place in history on July 1st, 1898. And whereas the Tampa Rough Riders were formed in 1978 to create and perpetuate a living memorial to the life and values of former President Theodore Teddy Roosevelt and his Rough Riders. And whereas the Tampa Rough Riders participate in numerous charitable endeavors and civic events in Hillsborough County, including the Teddy Bear Roundup, collecting new stuffed animals and distributing them to children in need, in addition to supporting Special Olympics events and hosting Tampa's annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Whereas in June 2023, the Tampa Rough Riders will commemorate the first United States Volunteer Cavalry Regiment's place in history and the 125th anniversary of their arrival and stay in Tampa before deploying to Cuba. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare June 2nd through June 8th, 2023 as Tampa Rough Riders' 125th Anniversary Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to observe the month of June by preserving, supporting, and promoting the historical significance and contributions of the Rough Riders executed this 17th day of May, 2023. And it's my privilege to present this to President Mueller, and please say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner. As it's been referred to, this is the 125th anniversary of Teddy Roosevelt and the Rough Riders arriving in Tampa. It is the mission of today's Rough Riders to carry on through educational and historical processes to keep Tampa, Hillsborough County, and Florida history alive. I appreciate the proclamation made by the Hillsborough County Commission today, and we will certainly continue to carry on that mission. Thank you, sir.
Now, Commissioner Cohen will present our final proclamation this morning.
And thank you all for joining us today. With me on the podium are Raymond Wong from the Community Action Board, Sharon Gordon, and Audrey Ziegler. And they'll each have a few words to say in just a moment. But first, I want to welcome everyone and let you know that we are very, very proud to recognize the hard work and accomplishments of the Community Action Board of Hillsborough County. The Community Action Board's commitment to serve those in need, help communities grow and thrive, and improve overall quality of life is an inspiration to us all. The CAB and our social services team do outstanding work to help lower-income residents be successful in their educational goals and chosen career fields. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation declaring May, 2023, as Community Action Month in Hillsborough County, and I'm going to invite each of you to say a few words to talk about what you see is going on during this month. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Ray Wong, architect with Baker Barrios Architects and Community Action Board member representing Commissioner Harry Cohen. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the commissioners for the opportunity to address you today. It's a great pleasure and an honor. Theodore Roosevelt once famously said, "This country will not be a good place for us to live in if it's not a good place for all of us to live in." I think that this sentiment captures what's in the heart of millions of volunteers across America as they give of themselves their time in selfless dedication to making this country a better place. And I think that that's particularly true here in Hillsborough County. Today, on a day that we recognize Community Action Month in Hillsborough County, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners for your continued support of the CAB. I would also like to thank my many CAB Board members who, through their leadership, make my service that much more rewarding. Finally, I would like to also thank the members of the Hillsborough County staff, some of them which are present with me today, who are not recognized nearly as often as they should be because much of what they do, even during their own personal time, is considered to be part of their job. Again, thank you all very much for your time, and we continue to support the efforts related to the CAB and our service to the low-income constituents. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you so much for acknowledging the month of May as Community Action Month for Hillsborough County. We also want to thank our partners in Hillsborough County BLCC first and most, and our Community Action Board members, our advisory council members, Social Services Department staff, the Hillsborough County Human Services Departments, our community partners, and the residents of Hillsborough County. The success of the Community Service Block Grant would not be possible without the support of these partners. I'm going to provide just a brief, high-level overview of the Community Service Block Grant, which is the funding that helps the initiatives for Community Action Month. The mission of Hillsborough County Social Services is to improve the quality of life of Hillsborough County's most vulnerable citizens by promoting self-sufficiency through interactive service delivery and strategic partnerships. For the month, for the year April 22 to March 23, working closely with the Community Action Board, we are able to provide direct client assistance to eligible Hillsborough County residents using $1.6 million allocated to Hillsborough County from the state. Those core services are education empowerment, community engagement, youth empowerment, and family empowerment. Our education empowerment program covers, excuse me, my vision, covers tuition and supplies and fees for students who are attending post-secondary institutions. And many of these students are first-generation college students, so we're very proud of this program. For our community engagement, we have partnerships with Feeding Tampa Bay and some of our advisory councils throughout the county to address food insecurity through mobile food pantry events and distribution of food boxes. For our youth empowerment program, we cover after-school and summer camp programs and provide a sense of security for parents working, attending school, or pursuing employment, while also enhancing the cognitive development of the youth participating. And the funds also covers scholarships to youth who are attending community college or four-year institutions. Our family empowerment program are wraparound case management services that are long-term, and we help low-income residents develop long-term and short-term goals to help them achieve financial independence. We're also proud to say that a key measure in the adequacy of the administration and operations of this grant is the CSBG organizational standards. The organizational standards is an effort to develop high-quality performance standards with the mission of ensuring all CSBG grant recipients have the capacity to provide high-quality service to low-income individuals and communities. There are eight categories that must be met, and some of those eight are: community input and involvement, strategic planning, financial management and operations, data analysis, board governance, and organizational leadership. And we're proud to say that Hillsborough County passed once again 100% this reporting year from the state's Department of Economic Opportunity Review. So thank you so much for your support, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Audrey Ziegler.
Good morning, Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department Director. Every year in the month of May, our Board of County Commissioners and our Community Action Board take a moment to recognize May as Community Action Month. The reason this is so special to us is not only for all the reasons that Mr. Wong and Ms. Gordon mentioned, but all of the funding sources that we administer in Hillsborough County through the Social Services Department are administered such as entitlements. So when people are facing a crisis, we intervene and we help them stay on track to avoid circumstances from getting worse. With the Community Services Block Grant, we're able to address residents and individuals and households that are trying to work towards self-sufficiency and trying to work themselves off of financial programs. So with a grant of $1.7 million in this large community, you'd be surprised at some of the outcomes we have, helping our low-income residents receive self-sufficiency. So we're very proud of the staff, the Community Action Board, the Board of County Commissioners for always supporting us. They have a direct line to my office, so I talk to them regularly, and I want to thank the commissioners and especially Commissioner Cohen for championing this month, again this year, to let us recognize May as Community Action Month.
Thank you. So let's...
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. Item F3 by Commissioner Hagan is to direct staff to bring back a review of the Live Local Affordable Housing Regulation, including its potential impact on Hillsborough County. We have one correction to the agenda, item A43. This is to approve the third modification agreement to the contract with Trademark Metals Recycling. This should be to extend the contract and date by two months, from May 31, 2023 to July 31, 2023. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion by Commissioner Wostol, which is item A5. This is to approve a fiscal year '23 funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the corporation to develop communities of Tampa, CDC of Florida. At 10 o'clock, we have item D1 for time certain. This is related to item B1. This is to conduct a public hearing to consider amending Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances relating to towing immobilization services to accept credit cards as a method of payment. And then item B1 at 10:00 AM related to item D1 is to adopt a resolution repealing and replacing resolutions to update rates that may be charged for towing services and provide for periodic review of rates. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Can we motion approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, the Board of going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to the Board members, however it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. We have 18 people that have signed up this morning, so if everyone takes a full three minutes, we will not be able to get to everyone, so please manage your time accordingly. First three speakers this morning, Ernest Coney, followed by Sylvia Alvarez, who is virtual, and then Dorian Harris. Mr. Coney.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Ernest Coney Jr., lifetime resident of Hillsborough County, the CEO and also the CEO of the CDC of Tampa. I'm really excited to stand before you today to talk about the partnerships that we've had with Hillsborough County. Our mantra comes from Nehemiah 2:17, where Nehemiah looked at the gates being on fire, the distress that the community was in. And in response to that, he said, "Come, let us build and take away the reproach of this great city of Jerusalem and recreate it." That's been the mantra of the CDC of Tampa. To be a disruptor... had with Hillsborough County. Our mantra comes from Nehemiah 2:17, where Nehemiah looked at the gates being on fire, the distress that the community was in, and in response to that, he said, "Come, let us build and take away the reproach of this great city of Jerusalem and recreate it." That's been the mantra of the CDC of Tampa, to be a disruptor and to build. And during the Great Recession, after there was a lot of inventory of vacant homes, the county partnered with the CDC of Tampa to rehab those homes and make sure that families here in Hillsborough County were able to achieve them. When the James Haley Hospital talked about not having housing close enough to its hospital because a lot of its members have transportation issues, the CDC of Tampa partnered with Hillsborough County to create Haley Park, an 80-unit senior veteran house, senior housing complex, with 25 of those units set aside for homeless veterans. Today, we stand before you on the precipice of having an affordable housing crisis. And here today, we stand with Hillsborough County to be able to deliver a solution that can help to provide scale and to also do that at a much efficient price. The benefits of the 3D printer, number one, is sustainability. It's made of cement, so instead of having a lot of wood in your house to deal with termites, you don't have those issues. It's more sturdy than even than brick homes. And when you think about flooding issues as well, you can deal with all those issues as well. When you think about the cost, with this technology, you can build homes at 40% cheaper than what it would take to build traditionally stick-built homes. And we think about how we've traditionally manufactured homes, it's always been stick-built. We have never utilized technology. Today, we'll stand in partnership with Hillsborough County to be able to do that. And then, of course, the revenue generation side of it, according to the Home Builders' Association, for every 30 homes that you build, it creates 90 jobs, 6.9 million in wages and business income, and 3.3 million in taxes, taxes and revenue for local, state, and federal government. So again, we're excited to stand here today in partnership with Hillsborough County to continue these great relationships, and our mantra will be, "Come, let us build."
Thank you, Sheriff. Sylvia Alvarez, which is virtual, followed by Dorian Harris, and then Chloe Coney. Ms. Alvarez, are you on the phone?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of Housing and Education Alliance, and I've had the privilege of working with some of you in the past. I hope to connect with you going forward and to meet our new Commissioners as well. So welcome, and we're very proud of our Hillsborough County Commission, as well as the staff that we've had the pleasure of working with for more than 20 years. As Executive Director of the HUD-certified Housing Counseling Agency, we make a big impact in our community. We have helped over 50,000 of our Tampa Bay area residents with their housing and home ownership needs. We won the PBS WEDU Nonprofit of the Year for our work during the housing crisis, when 14,000 Tampa Bay area families were able to avoid foreclosure with the free foreclosure prevention programs we were able to deliver. This year, we're going to be celebrating our 20-year anniversary at the Heart Awards, so look out for those invitations. This event was named Best of the Bay by Tampa Bay Magazine, and it was also, it's been named the Academy Awards of Housing. I believe that one of the Commissioners, Commissioner Cohen, did attend one in the past, so look out for your invitation coming soon. I'm here today to speak in support of A5 and A7. These are agenda items that have to do with the CDC of Tampa. I'm proud to say that we have worked for the CDC of Tampa since our inception, and we have helped thousands of their clients become successful homeowners, buying a home the right way. They are required to take classes, they are required to have counseling, so when we put someone in a home, we feel we're never going to see them back again for foreclosure counseling. We are in a crisis when it comes to home ownership and when it comes to rentals. There is a huge housing crisis going on that's not going to get any better. We really are hopeful that the Commission votes in favor of these two items. As Mr. Cohen had said earlier, this is something that is only going to get worse, and approving these two agenda items will allow us to move forward. Right now, it's cheaper to buy a home than it is to rent, as you are all aware. So what we need to do is to make sure that we help our citizens, so we don't see another housing crisis like we did in the past. And we did win the PBS Nonprofit of the Year award for our work during the housing crisis, and we never, ever want to see a crisis like that again. So Commissioners, I'm asking today that you vote favorably for A5 and A7, and anything that we can do to help our citizens. Housing and Education Alliance stands ready to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next three speakers, Dorian Harris, followed by Chloe Coney, and then Samuel Wright, Sr., who's virtual. Is Dorian Harris present? If not, Ms. Coney?
Good morning. Good morning, County Commissioners. I'm Chloe Coney, a woman that wears many hats, and I am glad to be here. My address is 2303 Bandi Drive, Saffron, Florida, homegrown from Tampa, wealth of knowledge, and first black female probation officer, and I worked for the county in the 80s managing Lee Davis Neighbor Service Center, and then went on to be the founder and the first president of CDC of Tampa, the Nehemiah Project community, brick by brick. I want to thank you, County Commissioners, for your help. In these 31 years, you helped us fund many of our housing projects, such as Oswald Apartments, Haley Apartments, Dyna Gardens, The Riddle Part One. We looked and worked with you with many of our projects that we did. We tore down an old bar, the Rabbit Foot Bar, wasn't lucky when you went there. And today, it's the Audrey Sparker Center. We've sent over hundreds of kids to college. We're able to tear down a strip mall right there on Hillsborough Avenue, and today, it's the Chloe Coney Urban Center that is the Office of CDC of Tampa. So we are known for taking trash to treasure. You look at the work that CDC has done in these 31 years, it's much to be proud of, that the whole mission was to eliminate poverty and physical deterioration, and that's what CDC has done. So today, as we are coming to you for the funding, the four, the print center is needed. We have to be creative. We have a housing crisis. So again, that will be cost-effective. And again, with the track record of CDC building over 100 single-family homes as well as apartments, we know that print center will be able to be used for good use. And then, most of all, Dyna Gardens, the 23 apartments Town Health has said they're going to be building and selling. If we're going to create generational wealth in our community, it starts with homeownership and in those communities that we're looking at, under-resourced communities, CDC has been faithful in delivering services and giving hope to many people that want to own a home. So again, County Commissioners, I thank you for your support in the past, but I thank you today, if you vote yes, to continue to support CDC with those two agenda items. So thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coney. Samuel Wright, Sr., is virtual, and then followed by Vanessa McCleary, and then Raphael Guzman. Mr. Wright, are you present?
Yes, I am. This is Dr. Samuel Wright, Sr., and of course, I reside in Hillsborough County in the Temple Terrace community. Commissioner Gennaga and Commissioner Gwen Myers are members of the County Commission. I want to say kudos to all of you who support community action. I gave 10 years of my life to community action in Palm Springs County, so I'm happy to know that we are celebrating community action this month. But I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for your previous support of the CDC of Tampa. CDC currently has a phenomenal CEO, Mr. Ernest Coney Jr., and of course, your support has been instrumental, and it continuously helps them increase housing availability and affordable housing to residents. I am in a housing crisis myself, live in an area here in this community where they want me to relocate so they could refurbish this apartment I have and charge me $500 more per month. There is a need continuously for support for housing in this community, and your support of A5 and A7 would certainly help meet the needs of some of the citizens in this community. Thank you, and have a wonderful day. May God bless you, and may God bless America. Thank you so much. I support A5 and A7 on your agenda for the CDC of Tampa. That's that.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Vanessa McCleary, followed by Raphael Guzman, and then Diane Hart. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Vanessa McCleary. I am the Vice President of Real Estate Development for the CDC of Tampa. I wanted to come before you to thank you for supporting items A5 and A7, not for the CDC of Tampa, but for the workforce of Hillsborough County. What the CDC does is they provide services to help empower our citizens, and through these two initiatives, we are providing more affordable housing for our workforce. Just a personal note, I know that a few days ago, I went to order some food from a restaurant, and they told me that they no longer had the hours, they weren't open all the time, and that's because the workforce couldn't afford to live in our community, and they were having trouble keeping them. It's important that we think about the need for affordable housing and how it impacts our economics. I am a new resident of Tampa. I've been here for eight years, and I love it here. I love this place because it is such a great community, and everybody knows it, and everybody wants to be here. But with them coming, we have this unintended consequence of a lack of affordable housing because our prices are going up. This technology through the 3D printer would allow the CDC to scale. It would allow us to build houses faster, to lead less materials, and to provide sustainable homes. It's something that we need because we're in a state that is plagued by hurricanes. Every year, when the hurricanes come through, they damage houses. A concrete-built house is much more sustainable than a stick-built house or even a block house. So we are asking that you support this initiative, not just for the CDC, but for the citizens of Hillsborough County, so that we can continue to have our legacy residents affording decent, safe, affordable, sustainable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCleary. Raphael Guzman, followed by Diane Hart, and then Austin Zane. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. It is an honor for me to be here today to speak on behalf of CDC of Tampa. I just retired from the Hillsborough County Facilities Management. This is my house. On April 8, 2004, my wife and I, we were blessed with a home in Tampa for the first time in our life, and we had to say thank you to CDC of Tampa for giving us the opportunity to be where we are today. We have a beautiful home. We never had, have had any problems. The paperwork was something else. I mean, it was just a beautiful surprise for us that it was so easy to get a house in Tampa. You have to realize, we come from Los Angeles, California, and it's crazy out there, but that's another 10 cents. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, to speak on behalf of CDC, and just to let you know how happy we are, my wife and I, my family, to own a home in the Hillsborough County. And Jesus, I just hope that whatever it is that comes in the future, that you maintain the positive attitude and help out our community to continue growing and being helped by CDC like they've been helping us. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Diane Hart, followed by Austin Zane, and then Leila Lulikwist. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm wearing two hats. Today, I am Diane Hart, a community activist and a CEO of a not-for-profit. Some of you all might know that I am a rep for the state of Florida. However, I'm here today to speak on behalf of the CDC of Tampa. I served on their board for many, many years. I know the type of work that they perform. I know the need in our communities. I'm there every single day. So I'm asking you all to please support A5 and A7 to ensure that they can continue to build affordable, attainable workforce housing, which is sorely needed right here in our county at every level. So I'm looking forward to supporting them in any way that I can, but I am asking you all, because today, it's in your hands, and you have an opportunity to help the many constituents in our communities. So I ask that you all will please support this effort to continue to build housing that is attainable for everyone, and I know that they will provide an absolutely excellent product. Those 18 units is in a community where I formerly lived, over in the Temple Terrace area, that they're asking for some of this funding for, and if you all have been out there, then you know too that there's a dire need to ensure that we make our communities better and safer and stronger, and there's no better way to do that than to provide affordable housing. So thank you all so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Thank you, Representative Hart. Austin Zane, followed by Leila Lulikwist and Robin Lockett. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Austin Zane. I'm a resident in Brandon, Florida. I'm coming to talk about the 8/39, I believe it is today, for the replacement library of the Brandon, the current library. I would like to humbly ask that we rescind this, the votes that went through to take place on having this library approved. I think that it's not a great idea to have a $25 million library replacement when our current library is just as nice as a new one would be, if not even better. It's two floors. It has plenty of space. There's, the bookshelves are pretty spacious, and I think we should invest into upgrading the current library instead of replacing it with the new one. And the land where you are proposing to replace the library is on a green oak tree canopy that has been untouched for years. It's currently used as a wildlife area. I see sandhill cranes out there every day I drive by it. There used to be, on the corner of Kings and Lumsden, there was like a sand pit where the sandhill cranes would meet, and in 2013, there was a whole community back and forth between the Commissioners, Safeway, and everybody about whether to put a gas station there, and it was approved, and they filled in the sand pit, which is right next to wetlands. So we lost our wetlands, and our sandhill crane population has been decimated. I only see about four or five families of sandhill cranes, and they walk everywhere they go because when they have babies, they can't fly to leave their babies behind. And so I think that we should really consider where we're wanting to develop. I've been attending the Future Land Use of Unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan meetings, and the consensus so far has been people want to preserve our green spaces, preserve the wildlife and ecosystems that we see are being driven out with so much development. If you look on the Brandon Parkway, they have cleared out so much land to build new apartments, and I am all for affordable housing, but it needs to make sense. I don't think you should just throw up the plywood and sticks and boards and popsicle stick apartments everywhere and clear land where there's precious wildlife. I've seen bald eagles out there. I've seen herons. I've seen bunny rabbits. I've seen so many different animals, and I just think that we should really consider where we're developing. The people want to see more focus on improved infrastructure for these things.
Thank you, Mr. Zane.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Leila Lulikwist, followed by Robin Lockett, and then David Coleman. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commission. Leila Lulikwist, Brandon, and Happy Mother's Day belated. I wanted to pass around the gift for my daughter for Mother's Day. The sandhill crane families in our community have been very special to me. I fought the racetrack service station going in. I fought the quick pick service station going in 25 years ago. Our planner at that time said that the quick pick service station was not accessible with a wetland because petroleum and wetlands don't mix. At our meeting last night for the future plan of Brandon, I talked to the planners there, and they said they'd never heard of someone allowing a petroleum station to go in on a wetland, but this County Commission approved that to the detriment of our sandhill crane families, our burrowing owls, and what Austin was talking about, there is an eagle's nest on the end of the Brandon Parkway, if any of you guys would care to go out there and see it. I would like to humbly ask that we rescind this, the votes that went through to take place on having this library approved. I think that it's not a great idea to have a $25 million library replacement when our current library is just as nice as a new one would be, if not even better. It's two floors. It has plenty of space. There's, the bookshelves are pretty spacious, and I think we should invest in, into upgrading the current library instead of replacing it with the new one. And the land where you are proposing to replace the library is on a green oak tree canopy that has been untouched for years. It's, it's currently used as a wildlife area. I see sandhill cranes out there every day I drive by it. There used to be, on the corner of Kings and Lumston, there was like a sand pit where the sandhill cranes would meet. And in 2013, there was a whole community back and forth between the Commissioners, Safeway, and everybody about whether to put a gas station there. And it was approved, and they filled in the sand pit, which is right next to wetlands. So we lost our wetlands, and our sandhill crane population has been decimated. I only see about four or five families of sandhill cranes, and they walk everywhere they go, because when they have babies, they can't fly to leave their babies behind. And so I think that we should really consider where we're wanting to develop. I've been attending the future land use of unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan meetings, and the consensus so far has been people want to preserve our green spaces, preserve the wildlife and ecosystems that we see are being driven out with so much development. If you look on the Brandon Parkway, they have cleared out so much land to build new apartments. And I am all for affordable housing, but it needs to make sense. I don't think you should just throw up the plywood and sticks and boards and popsicle stick apartments everywhere and clear land where there's precious wildlife. I've seen bald eagles out there. I've seen herons. I've seen bunny rabbits. I've seen so many different animals, and I just think that we should really consider where we're developing. The people want to see more focus on improved infrastructure for these.
Thank you, Mr. Zane.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Leila Luliquist, followed by Robin Lockett, and then David Coleman. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commission. Leila Luliquist, Brandon, and Happy Mother's Day belated. I wanted to pass around the gift for my daughter for Mother's Day. The sandhill crane families in our community have been very special to me. I fought the racetrack service station going in. I fought the quick pick service station going in 25 years ago. Our planner at that time said that the quick pick service station was not accessible with a wetland because petroleum and wetlands don't mix. At our meeting last night for the future plan of Brandon, I talked to the planners there, and they said they'd never heard of someone allowing a petroleum station to go in on a wetland. But this county commission approved that to the detriment of our sandhill crane families, our burrowing owls, and what Austin was talking about, there is an eagle's nest on the end of the Brandon Parkway. If any of you guys would care to go out there and see it, it's perched on top of a pole at the end of the parkway. The interesting part about the planning, they talked a lot about how we're going to have to fill in all of our infill areas for housing. We have one beautiful piece of property. I'm passing around the picture of me and my daughter in 2004 at the Oak Tree Park. She is now 27 and living in St. Petersburg, but she knows how close I am to that Oak Tree Park. We will have our first Fourth of July parade in three years since COVID started. All of this business about the new library started during COVID. It's continued, and I am asking you to rescind A39. And one of the reasons why I'm asking you to rescind A39 is in the politics, state and local book, if you care to read that, I do things like that on my downtime, and especially with the issues we have in Brandon. It clearly states that the highest level of increase in our country as a whole is libraries. And this A39 needs to be rescinded because this company has worked with over 100 libraries in the state of Florida. There's all kinds of lawsuits against them, and we don't need a new library. Our library at Vandenberg is in a commercial district. If you build a library on Lumston, it will be in a residential district. Beilafonte subdivision doesn't want it. The neighborhood behind there doesn't want it. It would be better served to keep our beautiful vista that we have currently. If I don't get the Oak Tree Park, I would be fine with that, but I think the Oak Tree Park would be a big part of salvation for Brandon since we were really hit broadside with the racetrack service station going in, which is horrible. The traffic is backed up even worse. That's our one green space and our only remaining whole canopy of oak trees in Brandon. You're about to decimate Brandon, and the people are not going to like what you're doing. We have a lot of taxpayers in Brandon. We don't want just infill. We want to be able to have a vista. We want to have a green space that we can walk to, that we can enjoy with our kids, and we want our sandhill cranes to have a protective location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luliquist. Robin Lockett, followed by David Coleman, and then Brooke Ward. Good morning, Ms. Lockett.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Robin Lockett. I'm the Regional Director of Florida Rising. I normally fight, I've been fighting on tenants, rentals, and so forth, right? But today, I'm in support of CDC of Tampa. I think that nonprofits that provide housing is the fabric of our communities. They have been for years. When developers, developers weren't coming into our communities and they were providing the housing, they provided affordable housing. And I think that this, with the housing crisis, because we are in a housing crisis, and we're going to be in a housing crisis for a long time. The CDC affords an opportunity for people to purchase homes and for it to be a reasonable and attainable. I think it's very important that we take the opportunity to think outside of the box, not do things as normal, right? And create an opportunity for others to be able to enjoy this great city and county of Tampa. Not only a few, everyone should be able to enjoy it. So I support the CDC. I support A5 and A7, and I would ask that you continue, because the information I'm receiving, County Commissioners, you all, you all have always been a partner with the CDC, and I think it's, it's very important for that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. David Coleman, followed by Brooke Ward, and then Todd Randolph. Good morning, sir.
Hi, Dave Coleman. Shalom, az salam aleichem, and let's be mindful. I am, I am here absolutely standing with the groups, fighting for housing. I attended the Hillsborough EPA Clean Air Fair. I was surprised to see many allies. The TECO reprimanded to allow me to film his message to the public. Of genuine alarm later in the day was the county issuing yet another ozone air pollution precaution. We are asking you to schedule a public meeting for the county attorney to discuss with the community the policies that can be passed to address rate hikes. I still can't get over how TECO stopped Joe Citro from signing the Ready for 100. There may be good regional ideas from, to get, coming from together meetings, but Hillsborough needs its own TPO. The Joint Board of County Commissioners had a regional roundtable. Where is the recording, and why was there no public comment? Our CRA needs more funding for housing. Last month, there were over 1,400 evictions in Tampa Bay. Hotel vouchers continue to place children in harm's way. Uptown Sky had 3,700 applications for 61 units in one day. Thousands of our families continue to live in cars or couch surf. Children's, the Children's Board seems to conclude housing, food, and transportation are paramount. Why does Feeding Tampa Bay have to provide millions of meals? Harmful Tallahassee laws are creeping into our county. Just this week, an immigrant in Lakeland couldn't go to the hospital, so she gave birth outdoors to a stillborn and with no option left it in a dumpster. You modified A23, this codifying into county policy, if not law, the e-verify requirement of State 12989, but it's regarding Baker Acts at MHC. Instead of "don't ask, don't tell," you have stripped our police of a vital tool, and they're dealing with mental health crisis on the streets. This is a heartless decision. Does it extend to children as well? Where will they go? Is it also for indigent, the indigents, indigen, indigents that need detox facilities? Where is the humanity in my county board? When wreckage is all around us, we look back upstream and try and solve the problems. But my board is like the farmer that comes up from the cyclone cellar, surveying the devastation and saying, "Look, ma, don't see any trouble here. Ain't it grand the wind stopped blowing?" I challenge any of you to go spend a few nights at the Cove on 50th Street. See you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Brooke Ward, followed by Todd Randolph, and then Sean Wilson. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brooke Ward, and I am the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, representing our over 5,000 Hillsborough County resident members. I'm here today to talk to you about the widely and deeply felt rate hike problem that we have in Hillsborough County and what you, as the county commission, can do about it. We heard a lot today about the affordable housing crisis. Our growing energy burden is a major contributor to the lack of affordability in housing. On April 5th, this board unanimously passed a motion calling for two things. The first was to write a letter to the Florida Public Service Commission, calling for TECO rate hiking, rate hike hearings to be held in district. That letter was sent on April 11th. We have yet to hear what the PSC has to say. But the second part of that motion unanimously passed was to have County Attorney Christine Beck look into other steps that the Hillsborough County Board could take to address the rate hike problem. So I'm here today to call for you to set a public meeting with County Attorney Christine Beck, to talk to the community and get feedback on the findings that she has about the next steps that the Hillsborough County Board can take to address the rate hike problem. I can tell you that there are many steps that can be taken, and to the two commissioners who have met with us, we've been able to share those policy steps. And I look forward to hopefully meeting with the rest of the board to have those conversations. We've had really positive feedback when we have had those conversations. As I mentioned, this is a widely and deeply felt problem that impacts every single one of your constituents in some manner. And that's why it's important that we solve this community problem as a community. And that's why we urge you today to schedule a public meeting with the county attorney, where she can report back on her findings of policy considerations that can address rate hike, the rate hikes in Hillsborough County, and have a conversation with the community. I thank you so much for your time, for the work that you do, and I hope the rest, that you have a wonderful and blessed rest of your week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Todd Randolph, followed by Sean Wilson.
Hey, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph, resident of Hillsborough County. Firstly, I thank the county commission for actively engaging with the Florida Public Service Commission and writing a letter to them urging them to hold in-district hearings to allow TECO customer concerns to be heard. And so today, I'm asking that you follow up on that action and that a public meeting be scheduled for the county attorney to discuss with the community the policies that can be passed to address rate hikes. I appreciate this opportunity to be here in front of you. It strengthens my standing as an individual in the community to show that people can individually make a difference. I challenge myself to see how I can make a positive difference in this community, specifically in sustainable living. I am an active member of Sierra Club and Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful and Food and Water Watch, which is the organization that I represent today to have my voice heard at this platform. I want to do what I can to make things right. This is a challenge that I hope others take on as well. And in this instance, I implore the county commission, what more can be done to make our voices heard by the PSC so that we can't have further rate hikes, particularly when these rate hikes are tied to TECO's reliance on fossil fuels? TECO has been granted a legal monopoly, and I agree with that. They should have a monopoly. It's just the nature of the energy business and supplying to customers here. But TECO has removed public hearings from Hillsborough County. They are effectively taking steps to silence the voice of their customers. This is a clear and egregious injustice, and I believe it is the duty of all corners of government to call out and correct this injustice. So how can the county commission strengthen my petition, and how can I strengthen the county's recent petition to the PSC? I know there is more that we both can do to correct what is an obvious grievance in regard to having in-district TECO hearings. I am asking that the public meeting be scheduled for the county attorney to discuss with the community the policies that can be passed to address rate hikes. Thank you for listening to us constituents and for taking your recent action.
Thank you, sir. Sean Wilson, followed by Humira Avzal, and then Tony Williams.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Sean Wilson, and members of the commission. My name is Sean Wilson. I'm the President of Blue Sky Communities with offices at 180 Fountain Parkway North in St. Petersburg. The USA and Florida have a system for creating affordable rental housing. It's a system that, it's really a machine that incentivizes private developers to build the affordable housing. This is a system that was devised by the Republican congressional leaders in 1986 and with the cooperation of President Ronald Reagan, and it is called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program or the Federal Housing Credits Program. And it has stood the test of time. It's an excellent program that Hillsborough County participates in. It comes in two varieties, the 4% tax credit and the 9% tax credit. And I want to congratulate Hillsborough County on really having a great track record in, in utilizing the tax credit program to create affordable housing since, like I said, just about 1986. For example, you guys are leaders nationwide. There was a group of almost 100 national leaders in affordable housing that were here for a conference a couple of weeks ago. They took a tour of four developments, many of which you supported, and I know that they were very, very impressed. The tax credit program is a very elegant financial structure that relies primarily on private investment, but there is a public funding component in every apartment complex. The best part for you guys is you set it and forget it. It's one time only. Why? Because the private investment side is coming in, and we're getting it built, we're managing it, they're attractive, and, and it's well underwritten by the private sector and the public agency. Every development under the tax credit program is affordable for 50 years. That's 600 months of affordability that you guys are getting for one single upfront investment. Now, the very, the amount of funding that Hillsborough County might invest in any particular tax credit development can vary, whether it's a 4% or a 9% development. For example, Blue Sky has one development coming up where the county is committing $610,000. That's 120 units, and we're leveraging your fund 60 to 1. 60, we're bringing $60 for every $1 of county money, but your funds, your money was important. That's 610,000. That works out to less than $9 per unit per month. And another, now that's a 9% tax credit. We also have a 4% tax credit transaction coming up where the county has committed $6 million. That's 140 units, but still, it's only about $70 per month, and we're still leveraging your dollar seven to one, even on the 4% tax credit development. So again, I want to urge the county to continue to support tax credit developments. It's a great deal for you guys. You can rely on the private sector to get it built and to get it, and to manage it for the long term and to create real neighborhood assets that y'all can be proud of for decades to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You got Humira Avzal, Tony Williams, and the last speaker would be David Sinclair. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Humira Avzal. I live in Hillsborough County. My original plan was to focus my comments on the need for support of items A5 and A7, and I still very much support those items. But that was before I took a close look at the commendation schedule today and saw the name Rodney Howard Brown. There have been lots of people here, as I said, in support of A5 and A7, so I'm going to pivot to that. According to the Hillsborough County website, the county commissioners present proclamations and commendations to recognize important dates and causes, and to celebrate the significant contributions of businesses, groups, and individuals to the people of Hillsborough County. When I read this, many things come to mind that would make a group, individual, or business worthy of recognition, recognition. Things like doing, like doing things that improve or enrich the lives of Hillsborough County residents by addressing real issues like the affordable housing crisis, for one. What does not come to mind as worthy of public commendation is people who promote bizarre conspiracy theories and use a religious pulpit to promote these conspiracy theories to deny science and to deny climate change. What does not come to mind is someone who publicly and loudly claims that the massacre of 49 Muslims in New Zealand was part of a false flag conspiracy to silence conservatives. Someone who claims without any evidence whatsoever that the COVID-19 pandemic was planned by the bill in Melinda Gates Foundation. Someone who declares that the world is controlled by blood-drinking Satanists and that many members of Congress are involved in pedophilia. Someone who says that, quote, "At the highest level, the people that rule the planet worship Lucifer. These people perform human sacrifices and drink blood." This is not the kind of thing that comes to mind when I think of people who are worthy of public commendation by our publicly elected body. What does not come to mind is somebody who's a climate change denier, who, who believes that there's a plot to destroy our food preserves. I can't make this stuff up. It's easy to find. There's YouTube videos. This was before artificial intelligence. These are real YouTube videos. Look it up. This is what we are commending. The Hillsborough Board of County Commissions, Commission needs to develop some meaningful standards and criteria for giving commendations to recognize people. This is an embarrassment that undermines the value of the commendations given to individuals, businesses, or groups that actually do something to make a significant contribution that benefits the people of Hillsborough County. What's next? A commendation for someone who runs down protesters?
Thank you, Ms. Avzal. Appreciate your comments.
Or for someone who keeps Florida history alive by filing a bill that allows the.
Your time is done. Thank you. Thank you. Tony Williams, followed by David Sinclair. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Chair, fellow veterans. So I'm here today to promote an event that's occurring on 27th of May at my American Legion Pulse. First, I'll introduce myself. I'm Elfrid Williams. I go by Tony. I'm the CEO and President for Veterans Council of Veterans. I want to announce two events, if I can, in the next, for two, for three minutes. There are three Ms. that we, we kind of honor besides Mother's Day, and it's Military Appreciation Month, Mental Health, and a Memorial Day we set aside. Well, Veterans Council of Veterans have a special memorial on the 27th of May from 11:00 to 12:30, and actually, all three intersect. We, why are we having this event, special event? Because there are a lot of veterans who are dying by suicide, military veterans dying by suicide. We, we're the number 22 a day. What about 154 funerals a week? Who's the one that's got to manage those funerals? Who's taking care of that family and loved ones that have lost that veteran and first responder? And when I say first responder, I'm not doing it as a cliche. My wife's retired law enforcement officer, and her first attendant died by suicide when she was, when she was assigned to the police department. She's now taking care of our children over there at the elementary school. She's now taking care of our children over there at the elementary school. So that's, it was dear to my heart, and I'm just inviting you guys, letting you know about that. I want you to know that the lineup, real quick, Commissioner Donna Cepeda will be one of our guest speakers and her husband, newly elected Jay Collins and Luis Vietta. That's our first event. Please, if you attend, please attend. The second event is we're coming up on 100th anniversary of the memorial dedicated to Florida Negro, it's called Florida Negro World War Veterans. That date is the 30th of May. It was dedicated 30th of May, 1923. The 100 years is now 30th of May, 2023, and Veterans Council of Veterans, in conjunction with Gamma Eta Sigma, we're having this ceremony from 11 o'clock. So again, when it comes to veterans, it's not about politics, it's not about gender, race, it's about taking care of our veterans and honoring our pledge. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Last speaker this morning, David Sinclair. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is David Sinclair. I live at 8434 Pebble Circle, Tampa, Florida, 33615. I'm with LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens. I'm their state director. I live here in Hillsborough County. I've been here 38 years. I'll be very brief. I'm here to talk about the utility rate hikes. My brief statement is the following. I ask for a scheduled public meeting soon with your county attorney to tell the public the options that the Board of County Commissioners have to deal with the current electric rate hikes. I'll repeat, very simple. I ask for a scheduled public meeting with your county attorney so that we, the public, can hear about the options that you suggest there are to deal with the issue of the electric public rate hikes. Very simple. There should be no fear to deal with this on the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent minus A5?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
Bonnie, you want to introduce the first item?
Thank you. The first...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to waive the rules to address A5. We have several individuals here that have addressed A5. Instead of holding it at the end of the meeting, if we can address, my motion is to waive the rules to address A5 now.
Okay.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen and Kemp to waive the rules and take up A5 at this time. If there are no comments, please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, you want to introduce the item?
Thank you. Therefore, the first item will be item A5. This is to approve a fiscal year funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the Corporation to Develop Communities, the CDC of Tampa, and Cheryl Howell will be here to present this item.
Pleasure to be here this morning, county administrator. I'm here this morning, my name is Cheryl Howell. I'm the Assistant County Administrator for Equity and Community Impact. It's good to be here. I'm here this morning to recommend approval of the FY23 funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the Corporation to Develop Communities of Tampa in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the purchase of a 3D concrete printer, transportation, and accessories to assist in the development of affordable housing. And that's not the full motion. I just want to kind of explain what a 3D printer is and how that works. In terms of development of housing, we have the five L's that dictate costs. We have land, we have labor, we have laws, we have lending, and we have lumber. Most of those things cannot be controlled, but some can be influenced. And the county staff and the external stakeholders have been seeking out ways to reduce costs and to maintain the quality of housing. And 3D printing is just one option. It's not the only option. It's not the only tool, but it's one of the tools that can be utilized to help to scale affordable housing in a timely and in a conservative fiscal manner. What are 3D printed housings? It's actually concrete machines that pour out the walls of the housing, and it can be done, it can be done in a matter of 24 hours versus months that it takes to build out either stick houses or even cement block houses. It's done with minimal human oversight, but it does have human oversight, and it has a strong engineering and architectural component to it. Over the past, I want to say, decade, there's been a 23% annual increase for the use of 3D printed housing. A few years ago, I met with some printers that was doing some work up in the Forgotten Coast, where around St. Michael's, Mexico Beach, up in the area, and they began to use 3D printed housing because that area was devastated as a result of hurricanes. And so they were building those houses up quickly and to scale. They are highly customizable, so they can be built at 1,100 square feet or 1,400 square feet. Lennar Homes, who is a national home builder, built a whole development of 100 3D homes out in the Texas area. And so that's certainly something that can be done here in the Tampa Bay area as well. And as I said before, it takes about 24 hours to actually build the walls, and then you have to do the internal portion of the housing. But I'm here today to ask approval for the FY23 funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the CDC of Tampa, a Florida not-for-profit corporation in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the purchase of the 3D printer, transportation, and accessories to assist in the development of affordable housing for the period of October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2025. The CDC will provide matching funds for the project and produce four affordable housing homes by September 30th, 2025. CDC's investment of approximately $814,000 will exceed the matching funds required for this grant. This device will assist CDC and additional organizations as well in completing affordable housing projects throughout Hillsborough County, targeting various needs from microhomes for individuals, from homelessness to single-family home projects and even multifamily development. The CDC will provide staff to operate, maintain, and service the equipment in addition to purchasing the materials needed for affordable housing building products. The production of affordable housing for Hillsborough County citizens is in alignment with both the local housing plan and the county's consolidated plan. Funding for this agreement is included in the FY23 Countywide General Fund Nonprofit Organization adopted budget. It is a flag item, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes. I've seen this by video. It's absolutely amazing, this machine, and I believe it will be a huge blessing for the affordable housing here in Hillsborough County, and I'm very excited about it. And if you haven't seen the video and what it does, it's absolutely amazing.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, me pulling this has absolutely nothing to do with whether or not a 3D printer is an amazing piece of emerging technology. I've seen the videos. It is incredible. I saw and read some of the justifications that it might seem extravagant. Well, it does seem extravagant. My concern that hasn't been addressed is that this is general funds, and one of the comments that was said, pointed out Los Angeles, and that is exactly why I'm pulling this item, because this is funded by property taxes. The average rental cost for a two-bedroom apartment in Los Angeles is almost $4,000 a month, largely subsidized because of their extravagant taxes that they have perpetually increased in the county of Los Angeles, which is exactly what I'm trying to help Hillsborough County avoiding to become. We talk about affordable housing, and it's really easy to sit and say yes to these items as a feel-good item, but we often ignore the fact of when we fund things with property taxes, we have thus made everyone else around them slightly poorer, and that fact never gets mentioned. I am all for these organizations fighting for the new $712 million that the state just approved for affordable housing in Senate Bill 102, I believe it is. I am 100% in favor of these organizations because the state has a lot more money than the county, especially when the specifics of property taxes and what people believe they're getting property taxed for. I do not believe that they are getting property taxed for 3D concrete printers, and for that reason alone, I'm going to be a no vote on this item. I believe it's the right organization with the wrong project at the wrong time at Hillsborough County's current economic state.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, and I'm for pulling this item. Anything that says general funds, I believe right now has to be discussed by this board because as money comes from the general funds, we state we don't have enough money for roads and we don't have enough money for fire stations. Before you create housing in neighborhoods, I believe those are two components that this board should be refocused on. It's why we're in the situation that we're in now. That being said, and again, I'm glad this item was pulled because it needs to be discussed, this particular piece of technology, and honestly, I don't know a lot about it. This is not an organization just upgrading their facility. It's not just, this particular device, and I'm asking a question, will be used to actually build affordable housing. It is a key component to do that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, that's one thing that I think separates some of the other general funds or funds that have to be approved by this board for me is that this isn't necessarily an upgrade to a facility, okay, to put new parking lots in. This is something that will have probably a positive and direct impact on the actual construction of affordable housing. So that's, I think, very important to point out, and I again want to thank Commissioner Wilson for pulling this. I'm inclined to support it, but in the future, I mean, these are the discussions we need to have. This is money from the general funds that is not being directed to fire stations or roads. So thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Commissioners Wilson and Owen, as we get ready to work on our budget this coming year, probably in June and July, you all will have the opportunity to discuss that budget for general funds. But these are items, this particular item was a flag item in our budget, which started October 1, 2023, and I can't remember which commissioner item it was. But the need that we're discussing this morning, it was an approved item in our budget, okay, and already an approved item, and yet we do not want to help another nonprofit. This is not the first nonprofit. This is the second minority nonprofit that we've decided to pull and not fund because of general funds, okay? So as I'm saying to all of us, we will have the opportunity when we start our budget process and what you would like to see in the general funds, but this is an item that has already been approved in the overall budget, which started October 1, 2023. The CDC of Tampa, they are providing excellent service. When I said excellent service, I'm a past board member of the CDC, okay, past board member. And in an organization like the CDC, they are helping, as a matter of fact, the CDC is located in my district, they are helping many, many people with housing, jobs, and any other educational component that they can help them with. So I'm going to move that we approve this item today. That is my motion, is to approve this item.
All right, got a motion to approve, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. Got three more speakers. Just to remind board members, we're about 30 minutes behind our first time certain. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just briefly want to respond, Commissioner Myers. I don't think that me or Commissioner Wilson, I don't want to speak for you, are saying that the CDC doesn't do a great job and that this is, this is not, affordable housing is not important. It is. I think, and I'm actually supporting this, I'm going to vote yes on this. So I'm supporting this. What I'm saying is, these are from general funds, and we sit here on this dais and we talk about that we don't have enough money to budget for more fire stations and more roads, and we continue to develop property whenever we don't have proper response times with fire stations and our roads are substandard. I'm just making a point that these are the discussions we should have and to your point that, well, this was already approved, well, it's back before me. So we have to put our stamp of approval on this particular item. Maybe there should be something in the future where the budget, the timing changes, where a new incoming board who may disagree with how we budgeted doesn't have to put their stamp of approval on it. But again, I'm going to be supporting this, but what I'm saying is that this was an item that should be pulled in a discussion that we need to have. It's nothing against, the CDC seems like they serve a great purpose, but I fully understand that this was approved by a prior board. But again, like I've said many times, this is a new board. So those are my comments, but I'm going to be supporting it.
Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Cohen.
Commissioner Hagan, I just wanted to make sure my hand's been up for a long time.
Okay.
You're letting me speak now?
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Kemp.
Okay. I just hope this is continually brought up about general funds, and I really like, once again, I'm going to ask Ms. Wise to clarify. Ms. Wise, we have two general funds. Isn't that accurate? Can you just, once again, explain our two general funds and where this money comes from?
Yes, ma'am. We have two general funds. We have the countywide general fund and the unincorporated general fund. This particular item has monies coming from the countywide general fund, so these are from monies that are collected from all throughout the county, whether you're in a city or in the unincorporated area.
And once again, I'll ask you to clarify. These are countywide general funds. Can these funds be spent to build a fire station or roads in unincorporated county?
They cannot be used to fund either of those items that you mentioned unless it was a county road in one of the municipalities, for example.
Okay. I just would really plead, if this is confusion on the part of those repeating this, that they understand this concept, and I don't want to keep misinforming our taxpayers in Hillsborough County that somehow we're taking away money from unincorporated Hillsborough County that could be used for these other items and instead are being used for this. These are countywide general funds, and I keep hearing general funds, not unincorporated county or countywide general funds, and that's the distinction that we need to make. So I just want to make that clear. I'll of course be supporting this. This is what we should be doing, and I think it's a really good project.
Commissioner Wilson?
I don't know why this particular commissioner can't comprehend that we have clarified this to the general public, and these monies can absolutely be used for roads and infrastructure within the incorporated areas, and I do not understand why we continue to misinform the public that it cannot by misrepresenting those facts. No one has made those claims today, though. This is simply just about budgeting priorities, and I do acknowledge that this was funded on October 1st, but the taxpayers and voters of Hillsborough County on November 8th demanded change in the way that we do business. They fired two county commissioners, and they want that change. And maybe if we stopped thinking and doing the same thing repeatedly, we will find that change in Hillsborough County, and I'm simply pleading that for these general funds that we might need to rethink how we're doing things. The state funds... The state funds, I will, I'm going to be bringing an item with the Urban League of Hillsborough County that I believe in, that I believe would be great for the taxpayers of Hillsborough County. I'm going to be trying to help him get state funds at that organization, but not countywide general funds, because I simply do not believe that taxpayers, through their property taxes, believe that they are going to fund 3D concrete printers with those monies. That's simply it, has absolutely nothing to do with anything else, and I want to be transparent. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. Actually, I think this is a very good discussion because this is exactly what we're supposed to be disagreeing about, and it's, I'm sure, what we'll be disagreeing about this summer when we set the priorities for next year's budget. But Commissioner Myers' earlier point, this was something that was set last year, and we, we do have an obligation as a board to follow through on the commitments that we've made. I think that the need for affordable housing, look, all of us concede and recognize that we have significant needs in, in the area of infrastructure and also in public safety, but we also have needs in the area of affordable housing. And it's not just as simple as wanting to provide a place for people to live and make their lives easier. The bottom line is, we are hearing about businesses that are closing down because they cannot hire employees who can afford to live near enough to their place of work to be able to make it to work. And the combination of the transportation problems and the cost of housing really do have a detrimental effect on our economy. So it is appropriate, I think, for us to embark on projects that will help deal with the lack of, whether you call it affordable housing or attainable housing or, or workforce housing, housing for people who are doing the jobs that are necessary to keep our businesses open. In terms of the fact that this is for a 3D printer, what, what I would say about that is, is that, you know, it may be a little creative, and that's great, but it's also not a recurring expense. It's a one-time thing, so you can fund it and not have to worry that year after year after year, you're creating some sort of an obligation that you're going to have to worry about funding later. I think that the CDC has a wonderful track record of doing really, really good projects, and I'm going to be very happy to support this item and recognize that this summer we will have another discussion about what our ongoing priorities are, and I'm sure everybody's going to have an opportunity to battle it out over every dollar that gets spent from either one of the two budgets. So stay tuned for that.
Excellent point, Commissioner Cohen. I just want to point out that Hillsborough County has had a longstanding partnership with the CDC of Tampa, and the reason why is what Commissioner Cohen just said, because they have an excellent track record. They far exceed the matching requirement, as was stated, I think, by over $300,000. It's his going for affordable housing construction, and again, it was included in our previous budget, so for all those reasons, I'm going to be supportive. Okay, so the motion to approve by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wessel voted no.
Okay. Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. We can now move to our public hearing. This is Item D1. This is to consider a public hearing regarding the towing services to accept credit cards as a method of payment, and Whitney Green is here from the county attorney's office, and Joe Gross is here as well, if any questions are needed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Whitney Green, County Attorney's Office. This amendment is to consider proposed revisions to Hillsborough County Ordinance 17-34 as amended to require towing and immobilization services to accept credit cards as a method of payment, and to authorize towing and immobilization services to collect up to a 3% transaction fee if a payment is made by credit card. The board authorized scheduling and advertising this public hearing at your last board meeting, and all associated legal advertising requirements have been met. Available, our county staff, Joe Gross, and we're both available to answer any questions that you might have, and again, this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Now, this public hearing, would anyone like to speak to D1? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve McElhenney represents the towing industry. We've worked very closely with Joe Gross, Jeff Grant, and Daryl Brown on this. We've also responded to the discussions that were held by the county commission. You have before you a revised plan that incorporates those various discussions. We're respectfully requesting that you approve this and move forward, but thank you very much, and we appreciate the diligence of the staff.
Thank you, Mr. McElhenney. Anyone else like to speak to this item? I believe a couple people had signed up. Calvin Hudson, Justin Heller, they present? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. On D1, we support basically what they're recommending is a 3% surcharge to cover the costs that we have to associate. The majority of the regulated towing rates are based on non-consensual tow, meaning people don't like to get their car towed when they pay with a debit or credit card. A large percentage of those people then dispute those credit cards, and we have to do a lot of research, a lot of digging and background work to fight those disputes, and there's a lot of costs that are associated, not just with the processing of that, but also handling and managing the dispute process. I had also signed up to speak on B1. I didn't know if they were kind of going at the same time, so should I wait on that or?
No, you should, if you want to say anything, say no.
Basically, in Hillsborough County, we've had a large increase in, in the cost of doing business. Our insurance has doubled, our, the price of our towing equipment has doubled, if not tripled in some cases. The cost of employment, our staffing has went basically through the roof. I'd prepared a long speech, but I'm terrible at public speaking, so just kind of speaking in generalities, it's really gotten expensive, and, and basically, since we've had our last increase in 2017, we've, we've kind of been going through the wringer, so. Any assistance you guys could provide with that. I have made a brief summary as far as recommended increases. I'm not sure if anything's been provided to you at this time, but just basically overall costs from the basic tow itself, as well as adding a few additional line items. There's a lot of costs that we're incurring that may not, you guys may not be aware of, but for example, electric vehicles, you know, we're having to use a lot of additional equipment to tow these, such as dollies. They can't just be towed with a regular pickup truck or a regular tow truck, you have to actually put them on dollies and tow them back. We used to be able to charge for that in Hillsborough County. At the last revision, they removed that, and I would ask that we kind of bring back some of those additional expenses for the additional equipment and time that's necessary and needed to perform those toes. Same thing like with Gojacks, extraction devices, things like that, there's, can take, versus a regular tow only taking a minute or two, you know, you're adding 15, 20 minutes and $4,000 piece of equipment on every single truck that we have to be able to perform those toes. Other than that, it's just general increases, base tow mileage, storage, that type of thing. It hasn't been increased since 2017, so I would ask for your consideration on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for your time.
And if you can state your name for the record?
Calvin Hudson.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the staff particularly for working with the industry and doing what I think is really a win-win situation here. We have an industry that needed some relief after many years of not having any, any increase in their rates, but at the same time, we have something, and thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for this, because I know you were part of it as well. We have something that's going to be good for consumers, which is that they're going to be able to use credit cards if their car has been towed, and that is a really important thing, because you can imagine having your car towed, the only way you can get it back is with cash, and you don't have it, but you do have a credit card. So with that, I'd like to move approval.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Owen and Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, did you want to comment? Your hand's up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I left it up from before, but I'll just say, I think this is good that we're moving forward on this. I appreciate that the consumer protections were added in there. About for many years, we've needed them, so I think that is, that will help people.
All right, thank you. No other comments? Please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B1?
Thank you. The next item is Item B1. This is related to the item you just heard, and this is to adopt the resolution.
Again, Whitney Green, County Attorney's Office. Related to Hillsborough County Towing Ordinance 17-34 as amended, this resolution repeals and replaces the existing Resolution 17152 and Resolution 1850. In order to consolidate these resolutions, update the rates that can be charged for towing and immobilization services, and provide for a periodic review of the rates every three years, and Joe Gross and myself remain available for questions.
All right, move approval? Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. If there's no comments, please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And Bonnie, if someone could provide the information to the gentleman that spoke on the rate increases that we just adopted, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is a procurement item relating to a temporary emergency bypass that occurred on Sheldon Road, and I asked staff to go through what occurred, so there is a procurement, procurement component, sorry, not so easy for me to say today, but there really is a story behind it, and I thought you should hear about it.
Good morning. Scott Storm, Procurement Services. B2 is asking the board to retroactively approve a series of purchases to alleviate an emergency related to the installation of a temporary bypass to the Sheldon Road super pump station for the Water Resource Department at a total cost of $1,106,372.19. Lisa Ray, the Director for Water Resources, is here to, to kind of go through the project for you and show you what a stunning job they did.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources, and I do have a short presentation available. It's up now, thank you. Do I just tell you when I asked to go to the next slide? Okay, okay, thanks. Sorry about that. So what I'm here to tell you about is our Sheldon Forest Main blockage. It's actually a success story. It's one of the biggest news events that did not get covered, and we are thrilled. So if you could go to the next slide, please? Where is the Sheldon Super Pump Station? This is located off of Lineball, if you know where the Costco is, and right behind there, there is a fire station, our complex, and we have our super pump station. This takes all of the flows that used to go to one of the decommissioned plants, the River Oaks plant, as well as some other flows that go into the area, and it pumps it to the new Northwest Advanced Waste Water Treatment Facility. And on February 25th at 2:00 a.m., I received a call from Chris Jones, who is the Division Director for Infrastructure Maintenance, telling me that we had a blockage in the Forest Main. It's a 36-inch diameter pipe, very large pipe, carries lots of wastewater. And they were not able to figure out what was going on. They initially thought it was an air plug, but that's not what it was, and they start, didn't know what to do, started putting flows into the 5-million-gallon storage tank that's located at the site. I immediately started texting other local municipalities and email them to see if we could get assistance. So if you could, next slide, please? We were able to get in assistance from nine different neighboring utilities to help us, as well as vendors, and we had staff working around the clock. And this picture that you see here is at the Sheldon Super Pump Station. You can see the lines of tanker trucks and pumper trucks. We were hauling all weekend long, putting the wastewater into the 5-million-gallon tank when it was at peak flows, pulling it out consistently. Those tankers were just running from this facility to the Northwest Plant for four days straight. Additionally, we had staff out at lift stations, pulling wastewater directly out of lift stations and hauling it to the plant, and our staff was able to come up with some creative bypass pumping that diverted some of the flow over to the Delwood Station, which is the old Del Mayberry Plant. So if you could go to the next slide, please? We were dumping these different trucks at the Northwest Plant, so this picture just shows the different manholes we had opened up at the facility where the trucks were able to discharge. Next slide, please? This is the location where the Forest Main blockage actually took place, and back on that initial slide that had the map, you saw the red circle, that is the location. You can see excavation taking place for the bypass installation, the, kind of a reference to the size of the blockage or the size of the pipe when you see the gentleman standing next to it. And what actually ended up causing the blockage was a plug valve that had broken, and the plug fell and closed the pipe, so nothing was able to be pumped through this pipe. If you go to the next slide, please? We had our team working around the clock, as I said, and we were using our SCADA system to monitor the system to make sure that we were not having any overflows anywhere in any location. We were able to stay ahead of it. If you look at the bottom graph, that shows what was happening at the Sheldon Super Pump Station, and on Saturday night, we came within four inches of overflowing the tank, but it did not happen. So that was huge. That was a testament to their dedication and their, you know, just staying with it. We also had support from Public Works. They came out on a Sunday with their concrete crews to help pour some concrete that was needed to support the bypass so we could get it up and operational, and you see that on the left-hand side. Next slide, please? So these are all of the municipalities that responded to help us. The first ones to show up were the more local ones, so the ones from Pinellas County and the City of Tampa as well. On Saturday, Toho and Orange County also sent. Sorry, I get a little choked up, it's kind of, it was a huge lift, and as a community, we came together, and it's impressive to see. It's the kind of thing that we like to talk about. We would not want to be talking about what could have been an 11-million-gallon wastewater spill. So it's a huge success, lot of dedication, and this is what mutual aid is all about. So, thank you very much. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Well, great job. Very much appreciate the update and presentation. Commissioner Wessel?
What was the blockage?
It was a plug valve. It was, it failed when it broke. It broke off a piece of it, and it fell and completely blocked the pipe, and it was only five years old. So we are working right now to go back and identify all the other valves that were installed when this one was installed, and working proactively to prevent this.
So just mechanical failure?
Mechanical failure, yeah.
Okay, less exciting than what I was originally told, all right.
Yeah, well, we didn't know initially, and we just could not believe that a five-year-old valve would fail like that, and we thought, you know, we have so many problems with flushable wipes, that we thought it was just that that had kind of built up.
Was it made in China? Don't, don't answer.
I don't know.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in this. It's obvious what a huge lift it was, no, no pun intended, in order to get this done. I'm sure everyone saw the story from Clearwater this week about the spill that took place there, and, you know, these things are really, are no joke at all, and we saw with, with tiny point, the devastating consequences to our waterways when things don't go well. So congratulations on a story that never became a story.
All right, can we have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. No comments, please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you, and thank you, Board, for your comments. These are the kinds of things that our staff are doing every day to protect our citizens. The next item is Item F1. These are going to be your board appointments, and Luanne is coming in here for that.
We have three boards today. One of them, your first one, is your Tampa Sports Authority. Please choose two. Commissioner Hagan?
I got to tell you, I've been struggling with this one all, all day, but Tony Menees and Andy Scaglione.
One and three.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita?
One and three.
Commissioner Cameron Zapata?
Do you prefer the number or the names?
Either one.
Okay, Tony Muniz and Andy Scaglioni.
Commissioner Cohen?
Number one and number three.
Commissioner Owen?
Scaglioni and Muniz.
Commissioner Kemp?
One and three.
Commissioner Winstall?
One and three.
Will be Tony Muniz and Andy Scaglioni. Your next board, both applicants will be appointed. Daniel Patton had also applied for the Sports Authority, that's why he's on the ballot here. So Courtney Houghton and Daniel Patton will be appointed to the Code Enforcement Board. And your last board is the Hospital Authority, and there's four vacancies, and there's four applicants. One of the applicants turned in their application late for a medical reason, so I'm just asking you to approve a late application, and then all four will be appointed.
So moved.
Second.
No comment, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
So it will be Madeline Courtney, John Grant, Jeffrey Johnson, and James Martin, appointed to the Hospital Authority.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, now, do we need a motion to confirm?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner.
Second.
Go off Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Owen. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is yours, Mr. Chair, is to approve the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award selection.
Yeah, if someone could just make a motion that we approve the committee's recommendations for the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award, and we'll make the presentation on June 7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item F3, Mr. Chair, to direct staff to bring back a review of the Live Local Act Affordable Housing Regulations, including the impact on Hillsborough County.
All right, thank you. And, Board Members, this will take a moment. As we know, Hillsborough County and the state has experienced extraordinary growth in recent years. This growth has many benefits, including the increased revenue that the county receives. However, the growth, with the growth, comes a need for additional services and the cost associated with each. As we all know, due to our growth, the real estate market has exploded, creating a significant need for affordable and workforce housing. Hillsborough County has recognized this need, and that's why it's been a priority for the Board over the last few years, where we've made record investments to help those who are in need. I can tell you, as a parent of a 16- and 21-year-old, I have very serious concerns on what housing, what the cost of housing is going to be when they enter the workforce in a few years. To the legislature's credit, they addressed this issue during the past session with Senate Bill 102 entitled the Live Local Act. It appropriates $711 million for housing projects throughout the Florida Housing and Finance Corporation, the largest investment in housing in state history. The bill provides for low-interest loans to developers, down payment and closing cost assistance to hometown heroes, and incentivizes development of affordable housing, and eliminates barriers to development, which I think we would all agree is much needed. And I want to say that I'm certainly no expert when it comes to interpreting the legislature's statutes, but I have reviewed the bill, and while it contains many positive elements, I must say I am concerned about some potential unintended consequences and potential implications for our residents and local government. I'm just going to identify a couple issues, open it up if any Board members want to make any comments, and then I'm going to ask staff if they could make a few comments, and then I'll make a motion after that. But according to the bill, if a property is zoned, commercial, industrial, or mixed use, and meets certain criteria, then the county must administratively approve a multifamily or mixed-use residential project. So not only is our oversight removed, but more importantly, our economic development folks will tell you that we have a very limited inventory of commercial and industrial zoned properties that we desperately need for economic development, recruitment, and expansion. So I'm very concerned about negatively impacting our economic development efforts. And Ron Barton and our folks have said this for years, including a few times in the past where we've rezoned properties for multifamily, and they oppose it because we simply do not have that much inventory to help in our economic development efforts. How will the bill affect approved PDs? I think that's a big question mark. If we do not have the ability to ensure that conditions are included to protect neighborhoods in these situations, how will, you know, will neighborhoods be negatively impacted? We all know we have transportation challenges. How will this impact, you know, transportation and the impact fees that we collect? And then finally, I'm sure there are going to be elements, again, I'm no attorney, but I'm sure there are going to be elements that are going to be legally challenged at some point. And so I'd like to know what staff in our county attorney's office feels about that. So, those are just a few things that jump out. Again, a lot of great, great things included in the bill, certainly not disparaging it, but I think there's potential for some issues that we're going to have to deal with and some unintended consequences. So, I would like staff to come back, and I'll make a motion in a moment. But Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and thank you for bringing this issue up, and I couldn't agree with you more. This is one of those where I think legislation, everybody's heart's in the right place, but some of the consequences to the actual development in certain counties, because every county's different. Something like this maybe, obviously, we know it's going to go into the Sodowsky Fund, which is a great fund that's used for affordable housing, but as the representative for East and South County, you know, and also take into account that we are a county that moves freight through the I-4 corridor, or needs commercial and industrial, this is a concern for me that, and I've made this known for a long time, that we will lose our oversight over this. So I wholeheartedly support everything you just said, and I'll listen to your motion, but thank you for leading this, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Appreciate your comments, Commissioner Owen. Commissioner Winstall?
One thing that came to mind, I got approached a lot during the campaign. I didn't know that there were so many defaulted golf courses through Hillsborough County, and there was one in South County that was brought up. And I said, "Well, you know, you needed to go and look and see what it's zoned, because while you're saying you oppose any more single-family homes, you should be careful because they might be able to just pack and stack some multifamily homes in the middle of your neighborhood and meet affordable housing criteria." And you can say all you want, and we can't say no to it. So there's a lot of potential negative aspects that could come on something that I think was very well-intentioned. So, yeah, interested to hear it.
And that is an excellent point, and I think that's one area that if or when that happens, that's going to be legally challenged. I think, I feel very strongly about that, so, but it's true. I mean, it's a very on-point. Bonnie, is there, staff, anyone can just make a few comments? I'm going to make a motion to come back, but...
I think all of your comments are right on and hit the main topics of the bill. The other part that maybe, I'm not sure you all mentioned as fully, is also the impact on our ad valorem taxes, because the bill also provides for some developments that have recently been completed to transition to affordable housing and could get some ad valorem tax benefits as well. So it could impact that, too. So, we'll incorporate that in the report as well.
Please. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I also wanted to just speak in specifically for South County. As everyone knows, we have a problem where we can't put students anywhere. So we start throwing up, you know, housing without schools in place. What do we do? So I sure would like to, you know, for you all to give some comments on that, on what we need to do, because I think that, you know, again, I don't want to get on my soapbox with fire stations and roads and schools, but a lot of the, most all the land that's available is in East and South County. So if some of these, these just start getting thrown up without having schools and having public safety in place or roads, you know, that's going to be a real problem. So, thank you again, Commissioner.
All right, and so the motion is just for staff to review the Live Local Act. I would also ask them, our staff or outside county, or our county attorney's office, to potentially engage, I know we have law firms like Gray Robinson that we've used on certain issues, maybe utilize their expertise if it's, if we deem that's necessary, but just to come back with a report identifying the key issues and any potential impacts to the residents and to Hillsborough County, including anything we can do, if there's anything we can do to prepare for the changes that are going to occur. So I'll pass the gavel to Commissioner Myers and make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Can we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Owen? Please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner Kemp? Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
All right, thank you, Board Members. Bonnie?
The final item or future discussion items?
Commissioner Cohen?
I do have one item. On June 30th, our Chief Judge, Judge Ficarota, will be retiring. He has been the Chief Judge for eight years, and before that, spent many years on the Circuit Court bench. I would like to make a motion that we name courtroom 505 in the Edgecombe Courthouse in honor of Judge Ronald N. Ficarota, in honor of his retirement as Chief Judge.
Second.
Well, we don't, we don't take action here, but if we can just bring that back, is there any sense of urgency?
Well, he's retiring June 30th, so perhaps we could bring it back to our next meeting for a vote. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the Board members, at our next meeting on June 7th, I intend to bring back a commission of items to rename the county's University Area Community Center complex. The complex, which is located at 14013 North 22nd Street in Tampa, was built in 1999. This 50,000-square-foot multipurpose facility is a focal point of the community and provides critical service to thousands of residents. It includes classrooms, community rooms, a performance stage, along with music, art, and dance studios, a fitness center, and a gymnastic and playground. Former Commissioner and State Senator Victor D. Chris was instrumental in obtaining funding for this facility from the state and Hillsborough County. It is a fitting legacy to name this facility in honor of Senator Chris. His efforts as a community activist, state senator, and county commissioner led directly to the creation and continuing success operation of the facility. Today, the facility houses the University Area CDC and supports their mission of community engagement, community improvement, and community empowerment. The facility is a beacon of hope for the entire community. Therefore, my agenda item at the June 7 board meeting will be to honor the dedication and accomplishments of Senator Victor D. Chris by renaming the facility to reflect a substantial positive impact and continuing legacy of his work to improve the university area. Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Zapata?
Yes, I've become aware of a new technology for road construction that I would like staff to investigate and report back on to the Board. According to what I've heard, this new type of asphalt fiber mesh that could be used in repaving or constructing roads within the county. And since we're always looking for roads that are more durable, which minimizes repaving, and more economical to build, which provides more value to our taxpayers, I would like staff to investigate this new material for possible use in Hillsborough County. I also would like staff to outline the cost and benefit of using this new material, including areas where it's already been used in other jurisdictions. And finally, I would like staff to identify a road here in the county where this technology potentially could use, be used as a pilot project. And my hope is that staff can complete this task within 60 days or less, so that we can have this information when we discuss our transportation projects in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
All right, so no other items. We're adjourned.